Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody to the July 16, 2019, regular board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you would all stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance. Salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any changes?
No changes.
Anybody? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as shown?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy. All in favor? Unanimous. Has everybody had time to look through the consent agenda? Is there any concerns, questions? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right. Motion by Darla, second by Wes. All in favor? That is unanimous. Next up, public participation, Sandy. We have no one for public participation. Presentation and discussions. First thing is a foundation update with Ms. Hannah Samples.
Thank you. Thank you all for having us tonight. We do not have a duck costume with us, so I know we should have done this in the duck costume, but you will hear a little bit more about the Duck Dive and how it went this year. So we, this is our annual update to you all about our education foundation. It is hard to believe that it has been four years since we were approved to be the Forsyth County Education Foundation by you all, and it really is thrilling to look at how far we have come in this time. And again, I just want to thank you all for your support of the foundation and especially this year as we took some new leaps and tried some new things, and so we appreciate your support in doing that. As you all know, our mission is to unify resources, not ordinarily provided by the district's operating budget, that foster innovation for increased student achievement. So that is what we are trying to do as an extension of our Partners in Education program. The foundation is an opportunity for the community to partner with the school district to support innovative teaching and increase student achievement. So tonight, we will just be giving you an update. Our first, the first slide we'll look at is just some general highlights, and then in just a minute, I will invite our chair and vice chair, which are two new components of our board as well, up to expand upon these and then also where we're headed in 2019, 2020. So our updates are our highlights for this year. We've broken down into three different components. First was operational. We did expand our governing board. We have grown to 11 people. You'll hear a little bit more about that. We added some officers, and so you'll hear a little bit more about that in a moment. We also added a PayPal option. Before, we were only really able to accept cash and check, and adding the PayPal option has been instrumental. It really has increased revenue both through our fundraiser as well as through other methods of payment. This has been huge to be able to have that online option for payment through the foundation.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
Just been doing a lot of PayPal myself this week. With the nonprofits, you get the reduced rate from like 2.9% onto 2.2%.
Right.
Then they also have that giving fund where you can actually get it down to zero if your donor also does so via PayPal. So if it's PayPal to PayPal, which is an extra step, but it's not that difficult. Is that something they're doing or thinking about doing?
That is. We will look, we are looking into that, and hopefully we can get it down even more. I mean, that would be, that would be huge because that is, that is one of, you know, one of the cons of using that service is having the fee piece as well, but, you know, that they do offer that option to nonprofits. That's something we're, you know, definitely looking into and will hopefully get, get going very soon.
Good.
Yes. Thank you for that point. And then our fundraising and giving, first, and this was right after we gave our board presentation last year, we had our new educator orientation where we always have sponsors and a vendor fair, and all of the money raised there has gone to the foundation the past few years. This year, we raised the most we've ever raised with that, which was $12,000. And so, and that's a great way for the community to be involved and showcase their business, but also give back to the foundation. And then we created our signature fundraiser, as you all are aware, of the Duck Dive for Education, and you will hear a little bit more about that. I will let, I'll save that for Brad to give you a little more information about that. We did increase our donor contributions and sponsors. We did add some new donors through the Duck Dive, and we did have some previous donors that have increased their contributions. And then we also increased employee giving. We have, we did a campaign last year where we were able to increase that and look forward to the future in looking into that a little bit more and increasing that even more. We also, our grants and scholarships, as you all know, is our giving piece or our, how we give out money. And so we had, we had our first branded grant award day, which was the hashtag #FoundationForIA. You will hear a little bit more about that later as well, and it was a full-day event. We started at one school and ended at one of the, end of the county and ended at another, posted throughout social media the entire day. It's really fun for the schools. They all look at social media to see where you are and see where they think you're headed, and so that was a lot of fun. The Foundation for IA, we added in some fun elements as well with colorful glasses and good picture opportunities with the kids, and so that was, that is something that we will continue also. We also improved our 2019 grant application, and then we also created and awarded our first scholarship. We had an anonymous donor that donated money in memory of Tammy Waddell, one of our teachers who had passed away last year, and so we were able to work with her family and give, ended up giving away two scholarships this year, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in a moment as well. So at this time, I would like to invite Brad Collins, who is our chair of our governing board, to share some more information.
Thank you, Hannah. Good evening, everyone. So I believe about a year ago, when I got to come before you and kind of give you an update on where we'd been, we mentioned a few goals, and Hannah kind of touched on those, right? That we wanted to focus a little bit more on governance. We want to focus on fundraising and move forward. So happy to announce that, you know, we've accomplished a lot of those things this year, as Hannah kind of mentioned in her slides to begin with, and I think one of the biggest things that we focused on was finishing off kind of the governance piece, expanding the board for the foundation, because we also realized that, as I know all of you see too, that it's, you know, when you have a limited staff or limited resources, it's very hard to accomplish everything you need to accomplish, right? So you can see the picture here. We've expanded the governing board from five to 10. I believe we've got several members of the board here, so if you guys want to stand if you're here tonight. We've, you know, one of the things we've been, I know Dr. Bearden's mentioned several times too, that we've been blessed with is that, you know, we get, we get great attendance and support from our governing board members. There's very few events that we have where we don't have probably a majority of our members in attendance, so that really helps us as we continue to move forward and push things forward to grow. One of the things we continue to work with as well is future growth, right? Is how do we maintain continuity? How do we make sure that we don't, you know, have this nice great board that we have now and we all just roll off? So we've now staggered terms, so that's now in place as well. So we'll have a couple of us that'll roll off, I believe, at the middle of 2020, and then at the end of 2020, and then it kind of rolls from there, where we'll have a few folks roll off each year versus having, you know, five or six or wholesale turnover. So that's been put in place as well. We did, as Hannah mentioned, we established some officer roles as we continue to grow and develop. So I was selected as the chairman. Evan Profeta is our vice chair. Donna Wade's our treasurer. I need to say from the communications departments, our secretary. And then, of course, we're obviously supported very well by Jennifer and Hannah, and then Dr. Bearden attends almost all of our meetings as well. So we get great support from staff as well. You know, as we continue to look at things, Hannah mentioned our fundraiser, the Duck Dive, and how that was so good for a first year. Obviously, we've continued to work to grow, right? We've brought in additional funding that we haven't had in the past, which has been great. Because of that, we've made some also decisions on how do we continue to grow that endowment? How do we continue to improve? And we've met with a lot of folks, and we've ended up making a decision to move the money into the North George Community Foundation so that we can actually grow the endowment and have that money invested and working for us. So we're still working through that process. We don't have that fully finished yet, but that is a decision we're moving forward with. So next up, we can talk a little bit about the Duck Dive. I know everybody's seen the duck and got to enjoy, you know, all the fun times we've had with the duck itself. So, you know, as we talked about, you know, our foundation and what do we try to associate ourselves with? What is our signature fundraiser going to be? You know, this was suggested and it ended up being a great success for a first-year fundraiser. We started this back in April, finished it off on the Fourth of July with great partnership from the city through the Fourth of July events they had at the fairgrounds. We had a significant number of sponsors, but even then, as usual, great support from the school district. We had a number of teachers, principals, students, parents, that all purchased ducks and adopted ducks, as we said, as we went through the process, right, to help support the foundation. So a lot of great success there, and it's something we get to build on now. We've now got the duck associated with the foundation and the community, right? So this is something that we get to build on and keep moving forward with and not have it just be a one-year fundraiser. You know, I think when we look forward at this, we're still looking at how do we improve, but one of the funnest things with this, and you see the pictures, et cetera, I mean, you know, even the day of on the Fourth, we had different people jumping in and out of being in the duck, and even my son was there, and he, you know, he's a rising sixth grade student. At first, I didn't think he wanted to be in the duck. He had a lot of fun being in the duck and just taking duckies or, you know, selfies with other kids as they came up, right? It was amazing to see how, once the duck came out in front of the tank and kids were able to take pictures, it was amazing how interesting everybody was with the duck. So, you know, obviously a great event. We've had really good success, and I don't know if you've seen the final numbers yet, but we did raise $84,000 from the Duck Dive for Education for year one, so.
Huge first year.
Yeah, it was a beautiful first-year foundation sponsorship. We had great sponsors from the entire event. When you look at that, that $84,000, $46,500 of that came in in sponsorships, actually into the program, and then we sold or raised $37,820 on duck sales or duck adoptions, as we called it. So it was a very fun process, and it was even interesting to see the day of at the Fourth, the number of people that gathered around. We had great partnership from the, from 37 Main who kept doing a lot of audio announcements for us, and it was interesting to see the number of people that gathered around to watch Dr. Bearden, you know, jump into the duck tank to pull out a duck, right?
My lady tell me that she, she said, you know, I adopted a duck, but she said, I don't know what I'm going to do with it when I get it. She thought she was really going to go and get a duck, a real duck. I said, well, it's a rubber duck. It was so funny though, because it said adoption, and she said, I'm trying to figure out what I'm going to do with this duck.
We did have a number of folks that, the day of, that when they came up, they, they said, well, do I get a duck? And we're like, well, it really stays in the pool, so that way we can draw your number. So a little bit of communication we need to work on there for next year, but it was, it was fun. As I was telling one of my co-board members, you know, we had a couple of students come up that were there at the fairgrounds that they actually went to another high school in another county, and they both bought ducks, and they're, they were joking around. They said, well, you know, yeah, it's, yeah, it's money, but, you know, hey, it might, it might pay for, you know, a semester of college for us if we win the $10,000, so. So they were excited. So obviously, a great year fundraiser. I'm going to now turn it over to Evan, who's going to come up and talk a little bit about, I think, foundation grants and go from there. So Evan?
Thank you. Good evening. As you can tell, we actually have a lot of fun, and as Brad mentioned, you know, we have a very engaged group and encourage you to look back at the, at the list of sponsors and see what, what all was accomplished in our inaugural fundraiser, because I think it is impressive results and even more exciting the potential that it has for where we're heading. So a little bit about the, you know, kind of the past here. So in terms of what, what the foundation has accomplished so far, a total of $180,000 have been deployed towards our mission in the, in the form of grants over the last three years. You can see the most recent grant cycle that we went through in the fall impacting almost 8,000 students totaling $40,000, as you can see from the numbers from the Duck Dive and other, other income and assets that we have available. We expect that to continue, at least in this next grant cycle, if not, if not expand that, expand that in some exciting ways. Hannah mentioned the Friay, okay? And I don't need to tell you what an asset you have in Hannah Samples, so I'm sure that goes without saying, but the, the energy that she brings and what she assembles on this day really does permeate throughout the school that we, each school that we go to, and it's some, some very exciting stuff. If you get a chance to click on those videos and see the kids get excited about it or watch the schools, you know, as, as we show up, the excitement really, really builds, and I think that builds engagement in an important way, because part of what we discuss and what we spend time on is how do we, how do we build that excitement, engage the schools, and get them to come up with those innovative projects that make the folks who are reading these grants and, you know, excited and want, want to, want to fund, fund each of these projects? And so, you know, that's, that's all, that's all part of the process, and so that's, the Friay, I think, is, is an important part of that, and we've spent time on thinking about how we can get them to improve, you know, what it is that we're seeing in terms of applications and ideas from, from each of the schools. Hannah also mentioned that we gave out the first scholarship this year, another activity that we would like to see increased in a couple of different ideas that we're throwing around, but this was for the Tammy Waddell Memorial Scholarship. They were so impressed with the applicants that they had that they came up with money, one from an anonymous donor and another from, they came up with some outside money to fund two, two scholarships out of those efforts. All right. Whoops. Hannah, what did I do? There we go. All right. So as we mentioned, fundraising and giving, improving the Duck Dive for Education, there's huge potential when it comes to what that fundraiser, what we think that can, that can grow to, learning from some of the experience that we had in, in the past year. Most definitely, please take a list, a look at the full list of sponsors that have supported the foundation, especially those that, that stepped up and, and supported the Duck Dive. Dr. Bearden and I had an opportunity to give out the winning, the winning check today at the North Forsyth Rotary Club, and we were excited to hear their pledge to reinvest that money in the schools as well. So we look forward to hearing about how they plan to do that. So it was really neat to see another invested community organization be the recipient of, of those winnings. And then expanding grants and scholarships, another exciting Friay, hopefully coming up this, this September, and, and all things that we'd like to invest in and see expanded. So Hannah?
Are there any questions?
No. You all worked hard. There was, there was the Duck Dive and all that goes with that, but getting sponsorships is a huge effort, but you want to talk a minute about when you go, guys go through the grant applications and how, I can't imagine how difficult that is to look, read all those and try to figure out who gets it. I mean, it's got to be.
Sure. How many did we read?
This past year, I think we had around 40, and times that by three over the past several years, so that has, it's definitely a lot, but, I mean, this group, they, they are, they're so invested in it, and we, you know, we do try to give them enough time, and then we do come together at the end to discuss and look at the numbers and everything. But one thing that we did this year is after we, after the 2018 cycle, we came back together and we looked at the application to see how we could improve, because, you know, our district has changed in the past three years since we first created this application. So we added a smart goals component, since that is something that our teachers are working with daily with their students. So we added that into the application, and we also added a, added some different timeline structure for them and a few other details that, you know, just to kind of help them in their streamlining process as well.
And the whole accountability piece too, which I think is really important, the report back on how the, the funds that were given or awarded, how they're directly benefiting students, which is really good for our teachers and principals to think of in advance when they're writing those grants.
Sure.
That was a really good component.
I think that was something that this year, I think now that the awareness is getting out there as well, the schools are really buying into it, and this year, we had the most feedback and marketing from the schools. I mean, they all were posting on social media, they had, they were inviting our board out to the events. They, like, North Forsyth High School Science Ambassador was one of the winners, and we had some people go out to their family science nights. We also went out to Kelly Mill Elementary to their, their STEM garden, and that was a grant that they had received, and so it was really great to see really, you know, them buying into it, and then the kids really getting it as well.
Thank the board members for all your work. I know we've seen you all be cheerleaders for the system. I know, Mr. Dershowitz, we've been at superintendent advisory meetings, and you spoke right up and spoke in favor of the foundation and the duck, so we appreciate all the time you guys put into that, really do.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it. Good job.
Yeah? One thing.
Just like, same thing, he did the same thing that day.
We've had great support. It's been great to be a part of this, but, you know, Jennifer Croft, though, and especially Hannah, Hannah is, I don't even have to work with her. I mean, she is, I know y'all know that, but she is truly phenomenal, and what she's done for the board, for the school system, for the kids, amazing. I just want to especially recognize her, because she is, she works, I mean, literally, I thought the meeting was canceled, so I text her like five minutes is the meeting, and she's answering the text, you know, five minutes from the meeting starts. That's the kind of service that she gives and what she does, and we are very fortunate and blessed to have her. I know y'all know that, but I wanted to mention that, Chris. She is just truly remarkable, Hannah.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that, and I believe we all concur. All right. Mr. Greiner, I'm sorry, but you're up next with the finance report, and I hope you can top that. Good luck.
I'll try. It'll not be as exciting as I thought.
We don't have ducks either. You do have a duck, see?
Yes, we do. We have ducks. We have ducks. He's got a red duck.
Yeah, there you go. There we go. All right. You have before you the financial statements as of the end of June, which is our year end, but I will emphasize this, when we get the statement of revenues and expenditures, this is not the final report for June. We have a lot of revenues that come in during the month of July that actually relate back to June, so we actually are allowed to accrue those as receivable, so we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more. First, a statement of cash receipts and disbursements. See down at the very bottom, a little over $64 million at the end of June. Our cash does start to, we've seen that trend continue to go down until we start collecting property taxes in November and December, so this is nothing unusual. We build this into our planning. We did still, at the end of June, have $40 million of that invested in U.S. Treasuries. One of those matures at the end of July by design, and then one matures at the end of August, so that money comes back in. So there is, we do, we realize this is the time of year when our, when our cash does start to, you'll continue to see it dwindle, but still in good shape there. On the revenue detail, year-to-date, 400, we're now at the very bottom, $441,769,832. As we mentioned, the Avalorum taxes, that percentage is normally closer to 99. I think we will get closer to that. The, and we, we build that into the budget for FY '20. FY '19 was really at 100%, so that's why you see that difference there. In years past, it's been able to kind of, you never collect 100% of your current year taxes. You hope the linked with taxes from prior years will make up that difference. Typically, if you go over a five-year history, it's raised normally around 99, a little over 99%. So we're kind of in line there, but we're kind of off, so that's why you see the difference there. The other intangible taxes, real estate transfer taxes, title of the Lauren, those don't reflect the money we receive in July. Those will actually all end up over budget. I looked at what we received this, this month, so if you add all those together, it's close to almost $2 million. So you can see we're about 1.2 million short, so we'll end up about $800,000 over budget on those. That's good. The rest of everything should level itself back out. Under the grants, there's still some grants, I talked to Steve after the day, that we still should get money in for. Also, when you look at the encumbrances on the expenditure side, some of that's all set through the encumbrances, so that's money we're not actually going to spend in June. So that kind of, grants always kind of do that as well. So if we don't, if we don't spend them, we can't ask for reimbursement. Most of the grants we receive are reimbursable grants where we have to spend the money first. So it doesn't mean the grant's gone away. These were grants that actually had a two-year period related to them, so we just didn't get the money spent in '19, but we're, there's plans in place to spend that money. So again, this, this number will look a lot different once July and even also into August. We can actually count a little bit of revenue in August as well, because some of the Avalorum taxes, actually, we count back, so this number will look a lot different. Don't be alarmed. Okay, we'll go to the next one. Again, you'll see on the, down at the bottom, total expenditure is $442,666,741. Actually, under budget there, the encumbrances probably will not be realized, so that'll fall off when you look at the final statement for June. So on the expenditure side, we're about $1.8 million under budget, so that's good. That's where we typically find ourselves. If you look at the year-to-date, and we all have a number on here for it, it shows that the revenues are less than the expenditures of about 800, roughly $890,000. But based on what I said about the revenues, we still have revenues coming in already of $2 million, so that means we're a positive 1.2 million at this point. Now we'll continue to grow, so I feel very comfortable we'll get close to the $2 million, a little over $2 million that we mentioned that we'd add to reserves. I just wanted to point all that out so y'all didn't panic. This statement's always a little different, and that's, it always looks a lot different after July, so. So we're, we've refined there. Debt service, almost $45 million in debt service. We have an $11 million payment coming up August 1st. That's our interest-only payment. The principal payment, I cannot remember off the top of my head. I think it's in the mid-30s, around $35, $38 million is where that one. But when you add those two together, I know we're short, but we won't be, because we have all the sploes money from June until January as well, and we're averaging over $3 million in sploes, so you've got six more months of sploes. Plus, once the, the debt service millage rate, we'll collect the property taxes in November and December, so we're in great shape with our debt service. On the investment summary, pretty much the same report, still spending down the bond money, which, as you know, with the different, when we get the construction update, you'll see where, where that's starting to go. $40 million in U.S., a little over $40 million in U.S. Treasuries, we had $85,000 in interest in June on those. The general fund, Georgia Fund One is where we have the rest of that invested. You can see that balance is starting to go down, that's by design as well. We're putting that money back in our operating account, so that interest income will go down at this time. Only 18 bonds, I don't know if I've mentioned this before, but that interest we earned on that is, is not really budgeted at all. So that $250,000, and it's been running about $250,000. At some point, through facilities, that's something that's, that's just extra cash that's not built into the budget at all. So that's money we're earning a little over 2%, so that's something to keep in mind down the road too. I think that's pretty much it on the investment summary. Sploes, let it get a report there, 7.5% increase over last year, same time, so continuing to grow. Almost $3.6 million for the month of June, which is actually May's collections. It's not bad either, considering school got out at the end of May.
Not bad.
So you really had probably 10 days where a lot of people who may not have been in the county, so. Of course, you got other people spending money in the county, but you got a lot of people on vacation, so. Average is almost $3.3 million, so sploes is looking great. Will continue to grow, in my opinion, just with all the development. School accounts, June is kind of that month where there's not a whole lot of, some spending going on, but it kind of slows down during June. Some schools are getting ready for next year. The balance does typically decline this time of year, because the receipts, of course, aren't coming in, so, but our schools still have almost $9.7 million at the end of June, so they're all, no worries there as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
No, any questions? Is this your last big one?
This is my last big one.
Thank you for your time here. You've been, you've been awesome.
Thank you. It's been an honor to, to serve the pleasure of the board and the superintendent, and I've really enjoyed my time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Tom Winning, we love those pictures. Bring it on.
Good evening. Well, fortunately, each of our projects is well-positioned for teachers' return next week, students' return the following week, and then athletic directors, you know, knowing that seven weeks was just such a condensed time period, critically scheduled their home games for September for where we do have some ancillary athletic occurring. Additionally, the next phases of the facilities were turnover in 2020 and 2021 are well on schedule as well. So, with that, um, starting with some of the highlights, uh, this is Pools Mill Elementary School. Significant progress. You do see the overlay of the building footprint, uh, as well as the actual construction. So, just a few months ago, we were groundbreaking. Already now, the structure and superstructure is complete. The roof decking is complete. What you see in black was the roofing of a week ago. So, as we sit here today, uh, the roof is now complete. The curbing and gutter for the main parking lot up front is well underway. The detention area, underground detention, is complete in this area, and the playfield is to grade and one of the last, you know, kind of non-critical path, schedule activities.
What was that little arrow? I was wondering, right by the playfield there? You know, that points to?
A little arrow by the playfield.
Well, it's just a big arrow, but right there, yeah. No idea? Nothing significant?
Not significant to what we're doing.
So, is this the bus lane on the back? So, they'll back out and they'll go in the, in the circle and go out?
Yeah, yeah, this is the bus lane in the back. Uh, so a different view.
Wow, isn't that beautiful?
Just well underway in just a few, uh, months. Um, so this is the weatherproofing, uh, moisture protection on the side. And already, brick was, is gonna start installation next week, just to give you a feel for how fast that's moving. So, um, obviously well-positioned, uh, to get dried in, uh, before the winter weather arrives. Uh, three, four months of interior fit-out, uh, well-positioned for the opening of school next year. This is just one example of a security vestibule. We are simultaneously working now on eighteen elementary schools. The challenge, obviously, was, as you see by these photos, uh, each of the elementary school vestibules, while we do have some prototypes and a couple duplications, for the most part, you have eighteen different, unique functions, uh, structures, dimensions, colors, aesthetics. But, uh, the positive news is the vast majority of the eighteen will be substantially complete for the students' return August first. Beyond that, uh, the contractor was obligated to a December completion for all of them, but we're hoping to complete the balance of those within the following month as well. So, well ahead of schedule for security.
Do they not go all the way to the ceiling?
Uh, yeah, ultimately, it does. Some of these are work in progress. So, a couple of the elementary school projects I didn't mention that were critical to us over the summer, uh, the chestadee roofing. So, if you remember, I talked about the center section was critical where we needed to remove and replace. Fortunately, all of that work will be done next week in time for students' return. That then leaves the wing sections, um, but the wing sections is an overlay. So, what I was thinking about, you know, non-impact or mitigating impact to existing operations. So, that was a great solution that was implemented. So, the roofing is off the, the critical path of, of the overall program, um, for chestadee. Similarly, uh, Silver City, uh, paving will commence the end of this week. So, the striping, that will be complete for students' return. Uh, and then the G-Nets additions at Hill Center, uh, is being completed this week and next week as well. So, moving on to the high schools, uh, this is an aerial view of East Forsyth High School. The first thing to notice is this is the main first-floor level area building pad. Uh, this is all to grade. All the gray matter you see, and I'll give you a further close-up, but it is good to get the aerial, kind of ninety-acre, um, executive summary view of this. So, foundations are ahead of schedule. That's great. You may recall from the last meeting, um, we were concerned about, uh, rock, both weathered rock, blast rock, as well as unsuitable soils. Unfortunately, we have hit each of those. Fortunately, we have successfully worked through those challenges for the critical building area. So, what you see in gray, right, is the rock. What you see in brown is the soil. To give you a better view of that, um, you see the, the sunken gym elevation where the rock was deeper, um, but as I mentioned, these foundations are all in. Site utilities is, uh, well underway throughout the acreage, uh, as well as the critical path retaining walls, uh, for the grades. Uh, this is a better close-up view of some of the rock we've encountered and, um, and overcome successfully. So, the other, uh, critical job over the summer was, uh, Central Athletics. So, this is the restroom concessions area. Interior finishes, uh, finishing up this week there. Uh, this is the locker room, uh, expansion. Uh, similarly, that will be complete in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the grandstands will begin installation in the next couple of weeks with the end of August completion, and that ties to the critical homecoming game that Central, uh, had scheduled. And, and when I say, you know, the ancillary facilities for athletics, all the football fields, all the playing fields for the preliminary games in August will happen. But the big crowd games were all scheduled for September, knowing where we were, even a year ago in planning. Similarly, at South Forsyth High School, uh, this is the concessions restroom addition for their football program. This is West Forsyth High School. You may recall, the critical thing we needed to do over the last seven weeks was, um, the, the new area that you see here, the twenty-classroom addition building pad, is served by a new cooling tower, uh, that was placed in the existing building, as well as the electrical, mechanical tie-ins, as well as really the, the wall change, right? All of these windows were previously exterior. Now, similar to the Lambert expansion we had, um, they will be, uh, interior rooms, so we finished all the interior fit-out, uh, and all of that was critical before teachers' return next week. So, that takes West off the critical path in terms of existing students' operations. Foundations are well underway. Uh, MEP Underground is well underway. So, the mission there, steel begins, uh, next month. Critical path would be dry-in before winter weather hits, and then we have the three, four months of interior fit-out. Some of the high school projects that I didn't mention, uh, Alliance Academy, uh, in the, of, of the parking deck. Finishing stages, landscaping in progress, finishes, uh, elevators in progress. So, you may recall, the original schedule was a December completion. We're looking to complete that the end of August, um, which is good news. So, looking ahead, uh, for Academy for Creative Education in the Performing Arts Center, design is progressing on schedule. Procurement occurs in October. That allows us the, uh, just shy of two years to get that complete for twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the other projects would be the North, Central, and South Performing Arts Center. All of those renovations are well underway, uh, with a September completion.
I actually had a request. People saw the pictures you put out last time. If, next time you're all in there, if you had pictures, you know, if they're just, you know, not professional pictures of how it's looking in there, people were excited.
Of the performing arts?
Yeah, anything you could show, people really, they want to see it. They're excited. Please.
Sure, we'll do that. Um, that leaves then, um, just the middle schools. So, Hendrix Middle School, uh, currently under design. Procurement in October. And, and what we hadn't mentioned before, I don't think, is, uh, just because we were, you know, prioritizing, obviously, what we needed to do this summer in the, in the larger jobs. But, um, beginning to get on our radar screen now, the CTAE Agriculture and Science additions, as well as the Technology Lab modifications at, uh, several of our middle schools. So, that's where we are on, um, the construction, uh, design side. Just to segue a little from Nuts and Bolts, um, Matt, Greg, and I had the pleasure of, uh, attending, uh, the Georgia for Learning Conference, which used to be SEFP. You know, it's a good two-day exercise to really critically think about facilities, focus on continuous improvement, work on best practices, um, get outside ideas, but, but as well, you know, be with our peers. So, we're sitting at lunch with our peers of Gwinnett and Cobb and DeCab, and, and the focus of the conversation was the significant gross, growth of Forsyth. And, and what we realized was, um, very soon, we're going to be larger than Atlanta Public Schools. So, that was kind of, uh, an interesting paradigm change for all of us to, uh, think about during our growing pains of, uh, facilities.
That's why you're busy.
But, uh, yeah, yes, and it will continue to be. Any questions on, uh, construction, design, program?
That's great. You're on, you're on schedule and ahead of schedule on things, as usual. So, thank you.
Great. Next time. Thanks very much.
Great. All right, next we have governance team goals for fiscal year twenty. This is, uh, the Board of Education is working on our goals for this upcoming year, and we've kind of been rethinking how we've done it over the past. And we worked with Dr. Bearden a couple of weeks ago on his goals were for the year, and we obviously thought we should be supporting the goals of the system. So, we have been working on, um, what we think are, at this point, we're up to four goals. And, um, I don't know if we can put it on. Can you put that online, Sam, or does anybody care?
Almost ready.
Is it on? Do you want to put that online, or just?
I can.
I'll just, I'm not going to read the whole thing. We have four primary goals that we're looking at right now. The first is a rent guarding safety for students and staff. The second is teaching the whole child, the whole child. The third is effective and official financial planning. And the fourth has to do with keeping a, a small-town field to our school system. So, as the board members, we've been looking at this and, uh, adding and editing. I think one of the things we added was another action goal to number three, which is something that, uh, Dr. Beck actually kind of touched on a little bit. Is it on there now? It's a little farther.
It is.
Here we go. Little farther down is the new one. You know, a little farther down, I'll go through. Is there, is it?
This, this new one is not on?
Yeah, the new one's not there yet.
Because it was updated today, right.
All right, so one of, one of the new ones we added was, words to the effect to review existing facilities for maintenance and upgrade needs and prepare and plan to address priority items with the remaining SPOSS funds and our maintenance and operation funds, or like, as, as Mr. Griner talked about, the interest payment monies that we're getting. So, um, that's already in the works. I think we're looking forward.
It is. Matt is here tonight, our chief, uh, new chief facilities officer, and one of, uh, his first charges is to prioritize a list of needs throughout the system. He's working with Bill on that right now. And at some point this fall, we'll bring that back to the board, uh, for your review and how we would, uh, recommend funding those projects throughout the system. Fortunately, as Chris pointed out in his report, we do have some funds, uh, available through SPOSS, where we better get some work done throughout our system. So, we're really excited about that. So, we wanted to include that.
We're excited about that, because we've heard that request from our LSCs. We've heard that from the community, that some of the stuff on our bond, bond is big-ticket items, and we want to kind of knock away at the day-to-day stuff. And that's what we're, finally in the position we can start doing that normal, smaller, medium stuff. So, we're really, I know I'm excited about this. I know, I think all the other board members are as well, so.
So, if you guys are comfortable with those four goals, you know, between now and next week, feel free to send Kristen and I any edits that you may have, and we'll get together and put together the final list for, uh, official approval next Tuesday night. That make sense?
Sound good?
Okay.
All righty, that is that.
Thank you all for your feedback on that.
Yeah, that's been, yeah, I love that everybody was engaged on that, so. Next, we have some action items, starting with access control upgrade and conversion with David. Oh, boy, can you help?
Fearbach.
Fearbach, thank you.
That's a tough one, I know. Good evening, guys.
Actually, if you just take out the E, it works, okay.
For the last six months, uh, FS, uh, FCS School Safety, in conjunction with technology, facilities, and purchasing, has researched and tested options to upgrade the existing access control system while simultaneously expanding the number of access points through Fortshead County school buildings. For you who don't know, access points, that's how we're getting in the schools with our badges. Uh, this increased the number of access points throughout the building in our system was a recommendation, um, by the Fortshead County School Safety Task Force after walkthroughs during the second semester of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. This task force was created by the recommendation of Dr. Bearden after the horrific school shootings at Stoneman Douglas in Parkland, Florida on February fourteen, two thousand eighteen. At a macro level, one of our focuses is to expand and enhance the overall safety of FCS schools and facilities. This initiative is motivated by the ongoing focus to expand and enhance the overall safety of C, FCS schools and facilities. Concurrent with the plan to add approximately two hundred and fifty access control doors to the system was the analysis of the current legacy system, which is what we are using now. We reviewed multiple options, which included making upgrades to our own current system. In the end, FCS opted to pilot the SC platform, sorry, the S-two platform at Brandywine Elementary School through A-three Communications. So, A-three was the business that's going to implement the S-two platform. This allowed FCS personnel to observe the implementation and installation services of A-three. But even more importantly, it allowed FCS personnel to test the system, especially the interactive software system. The S-two software provided greater tools and resources to FCS safety and school-based staff to monitor, set, control, and report. In fact, the system offers much greater user control for increased effectiveness, efficiency, and is capable of seamless interaction with the new and upgraded Vigilon camera system that we put in, uh, this school year. We converted all of our cameras to a Vigilon, um, camera system. If approved, the plan would be implemented in multiple phases, beginning with the conversion of existing doors and moving toward the addition of at least two hundred and fifty previously identified doors requiring access control. And these additional doors, um, last school year, I guess, two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, Todd Shirley had asked principals if they couldn't add access doors. Where would you have that? So, they gave that input to, uh, school safety. While this conversion may take nearly a year, A-three and FCS personnel will work in communication to switch over from legacy to the S-two system in a manner that will ensure control and accessibility. In the end, the S-two platform would be the sole access control system within the school district, and will become the standard for all future work. For example, new construction and modulars. The cost of A-three's work is estimated at one million eighty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Governor Kemp has allotted thirty thousand dollars per school through the school security grant. A portion of this thirty thousand dollars per school will be used to help pay the cost. The amount that is left over from the original one million eighty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars will come from the current bond money that was allocated to school safety. Therefore, I ask Dr. Bearden to recommend to the school board that they award an access control upgrade and conversion contract through NASBO Contract thirty-four oh-seven to A-three Communications Incorporated.
And as this aligns with Goal One, as we mentioned earlier, uh, safety for students and staff, I certainly want to recommend approval of, of, uh, this new, uh, conversion for access control.
I just, uh, I like that you mentioned that there were state dollars that were allocated for this.
Yes.
And what's nice about that is combining that with our bond money makes those, both funds go so much farther. So, we greatly appreciate the state government giving us that.
Absolutely, especially if thirty thousand per school.
And the flexibility to figure out
And the flexibility.
what was the best way to use that, and we're using it right away. So, really excited about that.
We're using it, again, I know David said this, based on the recommendation of our security task force. That was sheriff's office, office, our safety office, first responders, all working together, identifying needs in the system. So, this helps us to continue to implement those recommendations.
All right, is there a motion?
So, move?
Second.
Motion by Wes Nancy has the second, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Petition for annexation, Mr. Tim Amerson.
Good evening. I'm bringing before you a petition to request annexation for the Board of Education's central campus property while now to the city of Coming. Currently, right now, uh, the twenty-nine point five-one acres, the front section here of the seventeen point nine acres is currently city parcel number and in city limits. But we do have an eleven point eight acre section on the east side of our property that lies outside of the city, and we want to bring that all together into the, uh, city limits. This came about as our permitting, review, and inspections for the new Performing Arts Center and Ace, uh, Academy building. Actually, the Academy for Creative Education falls in the county. The Performing Arts Center fell within the city limits. We did get confirmation through the county planning and development office that this would be a city permit review project, and the city accepted it. But to make sure we're legal and appropriate, we should have it all under the city's property. should have it all under the city's property. So I'd like to request the superintendent recommend approval.
Yeah, this is just a formality that we need to go through to make sure we get through all the permitting process. So I would recommend approval. If the board does approve this tonight, we will complete the application. Kristen and I have to sign it. We'll send it to the city, and then it'll come up on a city council meeting in the very near future. And then we kind of go from there. So I recommend approval.
This has happened in the past, too.
It has happened in the past, right.
It's not the first time we've had to do this formality, so.
I have one question. The 30 acres total, that's everything in this parcel, right? So...
It's everything, this, this 29.591 acres, this entire parcel, all the way to the addition we put out to Pilgrim Road. We did a little land swap earlier.
Okay, so there's no other addition all around here, so we don't...
It's everything that's incorporated with this city parcel number.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion then?
So moved.
Motion by Nancy.
Second.
Second by Tom, all in favor. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it.
All right, points of information, Dr. Bearden?
The only thing I would add, enrollment is continuing to, to go up every day. Registration's very busy right now, and we will hit that 50,000 student mark sometime this fall. There's no question about that. But to Tim's credit, once again, as you all know, Tim makes projections, and we staff our schools based on those projections, and we are going to be very, very close to his number when we hit that four-month mark. So once again, a great job by him in forecasting our enrollment and our needs for, for the upcoming school year.
All right. All right, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Dallas, second by Tom, all in favor. There you go. Thank you. Good night.